And if you have one of these devices, please turn it to silence so we don't have ringing phones in the middle of the meeting. And this will join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Thank you. We're going to call the roll. Our attorney, Mr. Pierce, is here.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feingold, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Chris Schumaker, and our CPA, Mr. Blumberg. And I have been requested to start the meeting with a moment of silence for the victims in Las Vegas, so I will honor that request. Do we have any speakers who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Seven. Sturzinger. Sturzinger. Very good. Thank you. My name is Ron Sturzinger. I am a resident board member for Hampton Park HOA, and live on Astor Street in Hampton Park, of course. And I want to talk about the Hampton Park pond turnover. I've been informed that Lennar, developer of Hampton Park, plans to assess the residents of Hampton Park for maintenance of retention ponds located in the community. The GCCDD owns, manages, and maintains all other ponds in Gateway. According to declarations of Hampton Park, Masters has made up Lennar owns the ponds until they are turned over to the GCCDD and should be responsible for the cost and maintenance. Lennar would want to have residents pay to maintain the ponds because the GCCDD will not accept the ponds as they are deficient in their permitted design. To improve the ponds as necessary would be very expensive to Lennar. Feeble attempts were made to make corrections, but were unsuccessful. A less expensive solution would be to assess the residents and let them deal with the expense. This would increase the fees to the Hampton Park HOA, which is also not equipped to handle this type of task. The GCCDD manages and maintains all the other ponds in Gateway, and are more experienced and better equipped to handle pond maintenance. There is also an underlying concern that Lennar may want to turn ownership of the ponds over to the HOA as opposed to turning it over to the GCCDD. Hampton Park residents already pay taxes to the GCCDD for pond maintenance and should not require to pay more, nor should they be responsible for maintenance. The residents of Hampton Park would like to request the GCCDD to work with South Florida Water Management District if necessary to obtain operation and maintenance of all ponds, aerators, preserves, irrigation, sewers, et cetera, and relieve the HOA of its responsibility and unnecessary fees. That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next, Jim Brand, number one, Lake Circle. Good afternoon. I am James Brand, also known as Jim. I reside at 10154 Avalon Lake Circle in Hampton Park. From October 2015 through November 2016, I was an HOA resident board director for Hampton Park, and during that timeframe, I presented to Gateway CDD several times about Hampton Park and Gateway community issues. I indicated I was an HOA board director when I did so. Since November 2016, on multiple occasions, I have been before you, but not as an HOA board director. I only represented myself. If I didn't make that clear to you previously, I apologize. Today, I'm speaking to you again on my behalf. I have six short but complex questions that I hope you will find time to discuss during today's meeting. Can Lennar deed, for the lack of a better word, the stormwater preserves, aerator systems, and drainage systems within Hampton Park to the Hampton Park HOA? Are any approvals required? Well, I know the answer to that question. Article 11.8 and 11.7 and 21.4 and the Declaration for Hampton Park address that issue. Any amendment to the Declaration which would affect the surface water drainage and management system or the responsibility of the CDD to maintain or cause to be maintained the surface water drainage and management systems must receive the prior approval, prior approval of South Florida Water Management. And then 21 point, 22.4, 22.1.4, excuse me, notwithstanding any provisions to the contrary contained in the Declaration, any amendment which will affect the stormwater drainage and management system serving the property must have the prior written approval, prior written approval, of South Florida Water Management District or the successor agency, if any, in order to affect and be maintained. Does the $20 million plus bonds that was approved by, for the Gateway CDD earlier this year cover any necessary repairs to Hampton Park lakes? I know the answer to that. No. Why hasn't Gateway CDD taken over Hampton Park lakes as you have others in Gateway? I know the answer to that. They're deficient in their construction, and Lennar, to this date, has not repaired or provided necessary documentation to those repairs. Are you going to provide rebates to the Hampton Park residents for the taxes they pay for stormwater lakes and associated assets since they are now also being forced to pay for those lakes via the HOA assessments? I provided to you all a copy of the approved budget for Hampton Park. Fifth question. When will cleanup of Irma debris begin in Gateway community? It's begun in Bonita Springs. There's an article in USA Today, this newspaper, talking about all the trucks in Bonita Springs. You can't hardly drive down the street for all the trucks picking up all the debris. That's not happening in Hampton Park. We're overwhelmed with debris. And at the Gateway CDD September 7 meeting, prior to Irma, Mr. Caldwell, David Caldwell of Lennar, was speaking, and he was asked a question by a supervisor about Lennar's preparation for the upcoming hurricane. In so many words, David stated that Lennar had a protocol which required removal of construction debris, porta-potties, debris in dumpsters, tie-down of roof tiles, et cetera. This did not occur in Hampton Park. According to Ed Tinkle, it did in Pelican Preserve. I guess Hampton Park is just a redheaded stepchild. Thank you.
Shaper? James? Jane? Jane? Hi. I'm Jane Shaper. I am from Pelican Preserve. I've lived there since 2003. Pelican Preserve is a very, very attractive community that has 1,900 doors right now and 600 yet to be built. Due to that, we even know that we will have 2,500 households. We have approximately 500 golf carts and 100 bicycles. Numbers are changing all the time. The residents of Pelican Preserve are very fortunate to have the Pelican Preserve Advisory Union. I call them T-PAC. They are a committee of seven that has done much work to make Pelican Preserve an outstanding place today. They are accountable to you, CDD, when making very important decisions that affect all residents. Last week, five members of the T-PAC meeting voted not to permit 500 residents to return to the golf cart lane. This has been going on for years, I want to say, over two years. There was no way of knowing what the committee members were thinking because there was no discussion. They just voted. They do not have the authority to keep 500 golf cart residents from returning to the designated four-foot line far right area of Pelican Preserve Boulevard and any of Pelican Preserve's four-lane roads. I have reviewed a recent study, traffic study. I find inaccurate statements that do not line up with the Florida statutes. Golf cart lanes are to be between four and five feet. Pelican Preserve has had acceptable four feet for 13 years until T-PAC unlawfully decided that it would become a bike lane. Well, I suggest that T-PAC put their minds to safety issues that would affect all residents, such as getting a second exit entrance from the community. Twenty-five, 2,500 doors, one way in and one way out, have a new topping put on the boulevard. It is very faded and difficult to see at night and when it rains, and as the traffic studies states, inform the community what you're doing. All residents deserve the best. The Florida statutes state that first, it must be determined that golf carts may safely travel, not impede or block the normal reasonable flow of traffic. And I could go into that and inform you of a lot, but if anyone is interested, just go into the Florida statutes and do the search results for golf carts as I have.
Appreciate it. Time's up.
Oh.
So if you just want to wrap it up.
Yeah, I will wrap it up. But there are other regulations that are being... My golf cart is insured by Allstate. If I have an accident during my golf cart in the car truck lane, my insurance will not cover it. Golf carts with a limited 20 mile per hour do not have license plates. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell's here this evening at Hampton Park and is available for questions when the agenda expires, if your free time's up.
Good afternoon. Dave Caldwell with WCI. Lennar, as Chris mentioned, I wish to speak about Hampton Park. I was, Lennar has not made an official presentation to the residents. Here's the background of what is happening for the board members who aren't familiar with the issue. Hampton Park was designed and permitted by WCI communities probably more than a decade ago. At the time, it was intended, as it had in all the other communities that we had developed out here at Gateway, that the lakes and drainage system and preserve areas would be dedicated and given over to the district at the appropriate time. That's the way the documents were created. That's the way the plat states that dedications are to the district. For whatever reason, the developer has held on to the lakes and drainage system until, basically, this year, when we had completed construction of the last of the 10 lakes that are out there, and it was, the time was coming when we were needing to certify the entire system, bring it up to the requirements that the district had under its permit criteria manual, and then have a conveyance package to the district. Probably more than a year ago, our land development team worked with district staff and your consultants to develop a punch list and a program for bringing the lakes and drainage system up to compliance, and we've been working on that ever since. But as recently as about a week or two ago, there's been dissatisfaction on the part of the district staff as to what was happening out in the field, and we were more or less told that the system was not acceptable and it wouldn't be taken over by the district. That created a certain problem for Lennar as the developer of Hampton Park, and no, specifically in regards to, obviously, at some point, the developer is completed with the development. We have to have turned over all the infrastructure to either the Master Association or to another government entity such as the district for ownership and maintenance, so that all of those facilities will have some maintenance entity in the long term. When we were told, and I wasn't in the meeting, so please don't question me as to the exact words or anything else, but the point was, our company felt we had an uncertain endgame as to the lakes and drainage systems actually, in fact, being accepted by the district. In 2018, based on current sales in the community, we will probably be at the 90% stage, and 90% as to HOAs means that we have to turn over the association to the membership. So we expect that to happen sometime in the middle of 2018. It's a market-driven thing, so it could be earlier, it could be later, but I'm projecting it in that timeframe. In the near term, and the other issue, and the thing that exactly created this whole controversy and difficulty, is that the board of the Master Association for Hampton Park had to create the 2018 budget for operation and maintenance. It was a decision on the part of Lennar without any prior consultation or advice to the residents that we needed to incorporate within that budget the operation and maintenance, the drainage, the lakes, and the preserve areas. That obviously was not a budget issue in any prior budget. It created an obvious increase in the budget. It obviously raised a lot of concern on the part of the residents, and they should be concerned because from the get-go, our intention was to turn these systems over to the district. So that notice of the budget meeting later this month with the increase to take care of the maintenance obviously has your residents in Hampton Park very concerned, and it concerns WCI as well. Is WCI intending to turn over the lakes, drainage, and preserves to the membership at the association? No, that happens to be our Plan B. We had to provide for an alternative in the event we get to the time of turnover, we don't have an entity to turn it over to, and the cost to cover that maintenance, we would have had a larger problem in that timeframe. Our Plan A is to work, hopefully, in a cooperative way with the district to bring the systems into compliance and your requirements, and to turn it over to you. We expect to turn in a package for the system, all the lakes, all the drainage, all the preserves, later this month. Obviously, it'll go through staff reviews, and then eventually, if it's in compliance, it'll come to this board for acceptance. I'm hopeful that we will get to the point where Plan A will be executed in its complete form and fashion, and at some point, you will accept it. But our difficulty right now, we were facing a circumstance where we had to provide at the board level, the association level, for some kind of maintenance of the systems in the event we, the developer, had to dedicate and give that system to the residents. That's our Plan B. We don't want to go there. The residents, I think I heard earlier, the residents don't want it. They shouldn't get it. They're paying for services for water and management under your assessment process, always have. The logical expectation is that's exactly what would happen to their lakes, and you would maintain it and would be part of their assessments going forward. That's the way it ought to work, and we hope it does work that way.
I'll cut you off, but one minute's up.
A response is necessary. David, I was in that meeting, and staff was there, and I believe Tyler Tetra-Tek was there. We met at the request of Morocco, the engineer for Hampton Park, to go over what we felt were the shortcomings in the design of that facility. I should say, in the construction of that facility. Our checks, our reviews pointed out to them the work was not done in accordance with the plans and specifications, that we had reviewed, we had approved, South Florida had reviewed and approved, and Lee County had reviewed and approved. They talked to us about that approximately two months before that, and it even goes back to, I believe, June 6, Tyler, of 2016, when we sent them a comment letter addressing these and other associated issues. They, Morocco, simply ignored answering the questions. My deal is, and I told them, as a supervisor and as a registered professional engineer, I'm not signing off on anything that's been falsified. I'm just not going to do that. Haven't done it for 42 years, and I'm not starting here. They went back after that meeting, and my guess is, my guess is, that Lennar, for the first time, heard stuff they'd never heard before, and the ramifications of the mistakes in construction, and especially on the slopes, are significant. We didn't design that system. It was a very well-designed system, but I don't know why they did it. They called for a four-to-one slope to the four-foot depth. That's 16 feet out into the lakes. Nothing in Gateway is that away. All the rest of them go out to the two-foot depth and drop off at two to one to 20 feet, which means that they're in non-compliance. If we would accept that, and/or if the HOA would accept that, all South Florida has to do is come right back after that acceptance, come to us and/or the HOA, like we're doing on $20 million worth, potentially, fix it, and 20 will go to 22 or 23 or 24. My thought was, and I recommended it in the meeting, simply go back to South Florida and get a modification, change the design of zero to four feet to zero to two feet, like everything else, no harm, no foul. Most of the ponds are built to that. Now, we have some slope issues, but that can be fixed. But that deal of going from eight feet to 16 feet, when it goes down to 12 feet, the only way to do that is you bring in huge rocks and fill the pond, or concrete and fill the pond. That's insanity. That needs to be done. I think the problem is, again, my thought, looking at it from an engineering perspective, is how is I, do I, as an engineer, a registered engineer in the state of Florida, go back to the entity that I told them all the work was built in accordance with the plans and specifications, and gave them two certifications, one to Lee County, all attesting that all this work was done in accordance with the plans, and I asked for a modification because I didn't build it that way? That's like click, bang. I think that's the problem. Somebody got caught with their hands in a cookie jar. I think it can be corrected. Is there crow to be eaten? There's going to be a hell of a lot of crow to be eaten. But the thing is, whoever this gets dumped on, whether it be the GSCCDD and/or the Hampton Park homeowners, the Master Homeowners Association, somebody is going to have to correct it sooner or later. South Florida's not going to sit there. If South Florida would allow and look the other way on that, they just opened the door for us for that $20 million project will terminate right now at 4.4 million, and we'll tell them, guys, don't bother us anymore, because you look the other way when you want to. Now, that's what happened at the meeting. What I don't understand, in light of information that I just got before I walked in here, what you're saying is contra to what we're hearing, and that is, is that an amendment was done almost 10 years ago to the day that anticipated turning this over from the CDD to the Master Association. So if Plan A is to go, come back to us, which I totally agree with, and I'm glad to hear that, why are we talking about this amendment? I don't get it.
I'm not familiar with what amendment you're talking about.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because this is old.
But let me...
My point was, is that we would love to work and facilitate a solution. This needs to be under the provision of the CDD. It doesn't need to be under a Master Homeowners Association.
Are you suggesting that there's, you're seeing a South Florida Water Management permit that indicates that the association may be the maintenance entity?
David, for a portion of it, per mod from 2007, the deep erosion plan.
Yeah.
Deep lake erosion. I've got all the materials here.
We're trying to figure out how this weighs with what you just said.
I think you're, to be honest with you, I don't know specific to that, but I've seen it before in other districts where my consultant engineer, because they're so used, not every community worked on has a district, okay? They work on a lot of ERP submittals, and more often than not, it's a local association, master association, that is the maintenance entity, and there are propensity to reuse forms.
Well, this was done as an amendment to in seven after the permit was...
I don't know, there's no strategy here. Plan A...
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Plan A is to give it to the district.
Great.
I think that's an error, and it wasn't given any thought.
Well, I was going to, I was hoping that if I go back to June of 2007, this board sure as hell didn't accept something like that.
Yeah. Again, we're still trying, you know, our desire, Plan A, is to work with the district and have you accept it and figure out how we get there.
That's what we'd like to do.
And that the Plan B had to be put into effect only because if we got to the middle of next year and we still weren't meeting your requirements, we don't want to be next year in this position. It'd be too late.
If the engineer can give us a set of ASBills that addresses the issue, we're halfway home. Our problem is, he gave us a, I won't use that expression, a set of ASBills that say, in my engineering opinion, were lacking. We went out and did our own measurements, and they were not in accordance. They then went out, they being Morocco, at the request of either WCI or Lennar, one of the two, and started...
Same thing.
Okay, do the same thing.
I is Lennar.
I ran out, I ran out, I ran into them out in the field, the field crew, taking the measurements on behalf of Morocco for Lennar, and I said, are these running four-to-one in this particular area, because it's exactly where we ran them? He said, hell, no, they're not. So we knew that our data was right, but the problem is, and the problem continues to be, how do you get around the fact that your consultant certified, falsely certified, that everything was hunky-dory? I have no sympathy for an engineering firm to do that. I mean none. But it can be fixed, and it can be fixed very simply, but it does require a modification. Because if we don't make the modification and we accept it, we're back in the same boat as we are on all the rest of these ponds, and 20 million goes skyward. So we want to get it accepted, and it's certainly not fair to those residents, and I sure don't want to get into, and contrary to maybe what they want to hear, I don't think we want to get into any type of a billing system, assessment system, that starts divvying up, well, Johnny's got this, but Billy's got this. We've got to get a resolution of that. We don't want that.
I concur. They're trying to work at the Plan A.
But we would like to have some dialogue, because as of that meeting two weeks ago, Lennar and Morocco terminated discussions with us.
And in your, come on, in your opinion, when could that work be done? Do we need to wait for, is it water line to...
We can't do, we can't do anything, that's a problem we got right now. The water levels are high. You can't test anything, you can't measure anything, you can't do anything. I asked David a simple question at the meeting, and I couldn't get an answer to it. We, the CDD, because Pete Dora chewed my backside because I spent the money doing it several years ago on the pond committee, we ran cameras through the sewers in Hampton Park prematurely. We found a lot of blockages in those lines at that time.
That's all been redone.
If those have all been done, if that's all been done...
And they were done by that company that you've been using with...
Okay, but my point was...
Morris Riley, and they did it, and if they found a problem with...
Our concern with...
We don't need to hear all this.
I think the final point here is that we are going to be working with Lennar. The CDD will be working with Lennar.
If somebody will work with us, yeah.
So to try and resolve these issues so that...
Well, I concur. That's what I'm telling you.
And my only point, I was just trying to understand timeframe and expectations on, David, on behalf of Lennar, because I would imagine if there is an elongated timeframe in order for the lakes to be in a state that repair can be done, then that determines when we would accept. Is that accurate?
Doug, here's the problem. You've got, you've got to do the modification. You've got to do the modification.
Yeah, well, that's paperwork.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's paperwork.
I don't know how long that's going to take, because, well, again, David, I've done this a long time. You're going in and basically telling somebody, I want a modification to something because what I told you was done right before, I didn't quite tell you the whole truth. Now, South Florida, South Florida looks the other way, then we're clear on that. We're clear on that. But the problem is, is for us to inspect it and check it. Won't be until that water level drops. Now, that, you're now probably looking January, February to do that. Now, if that works in with your schedule, that's, that's fine. Who's going to be our point of contact? Because when that meeting left, Russ Smith and Carl Baraco.
Same.
Same?
Yep.
Because they just have, I mean, like, fell off the face of the earth since two weeks ago.
The reason why I bring up the timing consideration is because, David, I want to make sure that we're very transparent with each other on what, what it is that your Plan A and what the timeline for that is, so we can be on the same page and we don't get into a situation where you're expecting something to happen within a certain timeframe and we're not in a position to, to accept that.
Well, I'm being informed that we should have a package to you later this month, probably in the next two to three weeks, and then it'll be your turn to rip into the package and find its deficiencies and if it's, whatever it is, and then hopefully, what our difficulty is, sometimes we don't hear in a timely manner. Sometimes things sit. So, if we have your cooperation on your end of reviews and comments back, that's where we want to be.
I guarantee you, that thing, that thing will be a hot potato when it comes in, so we will get on it. But those, that's simply the problem of getting around. It's not between us and you all. It's we got a third party in, we got two third parties. We got Lee County on the development order relative to the littoral, and we've got South Florida Water Management District on the slopes.
Okay.
Want an explanation on this, or you think it's, you want here?
We need it. I think we need it.
I'd actually like to move on to the other speakers.
Marty, this stuff is hot stuff. We cannot kick this down the road.
And I'm trying not to explain any of it. And I guess for the board, what Mr. Mann is reading, and the board does not have the luxury of reading this, because I didn't mail, email it out to certain people until 8 o'clock this morning when I found various documents, so no one else has really seen this. So, I don't know, Charles, if you want, till today or here.
I'd be in 30 seconds or less, just because I happen to do a lot of this at the same time period, I can virtually guarantee, to the extent I can guarantee without having actually been personally involved.
So, you're assuming. Just kidding, Joe.
Yeah, but it's usually going to be a well-founded assumption. They didn't, the provision of this proposed amendment or did not change the maintenance by the CDD for part, but it refers in this new section to a deep lake aeration system referred to in the development order that be maintained by the Master Association. There was about a three-year period where Lee County was gung-ho on these deep lake aeration systems that had to be, under their code, maintained by the association. Now, logic would say, if the CDD is the operating entity for everything else, it should be with the CDD. Sometimes to get through the bureaucracy, you know, I think the different people may just say, you're requiring me to say, I've got an amendment that the association will maintain the aeration system fine, here's the amendment, give me my approval. And I can, as I said, almost guarantee that that was exactly what happened, because I probably did 30 or 40 amendments to various government just like this, maybe not in CDD communities, but, so, it was required over and over and over for about a three-year period, that is, this exact verbatim language. But you'll note that they are not, the amendment is not purported to change the maintenance by the CDD of the rest of the system. So, I concur with what David said with respect to the intent, and I don't believe this amendment deviates from that contradiction that, you know, it's probably explained, now, this needs to be corrected, because we give everything else and the CDD should take. Whatever aspects of the deep lake aeration system exist out there, I would suggest that is easily remedied as well.
Thank you.
We have two more speakers. Mr. Barney Draper, like to speak about office building.
Can't believe you guys are still popping by these lakes.
Come back 20 years, we still will be.
Mr. Draper, we do have a three-minute limit.
Hey, I want to talk to you about that building you want to build behind my house.
Wait, Girl Scout.
Give us your name and what community.
Draper, Barney Draper, my nickname, Barney.
Barney?
Yeah.
You live in what community?
I live in Vista Fine Circle.
And your property is?
Pinecrest.
Your property is one of the four that's adjacent to the Girl Scout property?
Substate, I live out in that city. I just know the name of the street, all right? But anyway, who owns that road in front of the building?
Right now, WCI.
Okay. And when you, when you take over that building, are you going to put a new roof on it? I saw it and I look at it every day when I ride by. Has that been discussed?
I don't know that the roof issue, when we were doing the evaluation, was a, what's the word I want, defective.
That's right.
Was not defective, as I recall.
It would be clean.
Yeah, it would be clean.
Can't really make some weight in it. All right, now, you're not going to park everything in the world behind that like you do in this place out here, are you?
That's going to be administrative. That's going to be administrative. Those trailers will be here.
All that stuff will be here, yeah.
Yes.
My wife would like that. All right, now, the other thing I've got is, uh, got the material covered, going to do the roofing. Okay, now, are you going to put a fence around it?
There's not been any discussion of a fence around it. At this point in time, there's not been any discussion by the board of a fence around it.
I don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay, can you find that out one day before you come in and move in on it?
We're not going to move in on you until we get the affirmative from the neighbors.
We don't have all that yet, so. Well, I got neighbors that have been talking about it, and then my wife started talking about it.
It's going to look a heck of a lot better than it does now.
It's a little hell of a lot so, huh?
Hey, and Barney, what was your address again?
12904 Vista Fine Circle.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You've already consented to.
I haven't done anything yet.
Okay, you haven't signed a document yet.
I understand that our community is going to have a meeting and vote on it some other way.
But I mean, you've got four property owners, of which you're one, that had to sign a letter, and then the HOA had to sign one.
I've got a problem with that, four people signing a letter, no.
I'm sorry.
If I was going to sell my house, I would have no problem signing that letter. Two of the people that you got signed the letter, got the house up for sale. They could care to put a cat house back there, you know what I'm saying?
I beg your pardon.
That might produce some revenue for us, but.
For the record, it's animal control.
I don't think that's one of the, one of the uses that we, we struck that use.
Let's think, because I know my style is running short, this man's always watching me over here. You're really going to improve the neighborhood if you do something nice there.
You think so?
Because it's, it really has turned it into.
It's degraded.
Like a drug drop off. I hate to say it. And I don't understand how we can have a dog park down here that my wife's got to have a key to get into to walk my dog, when everybody in the world can go to that park that don't live in this neighborhood. And who owns that park?
We own that park.
Well, I'll tell you what's going to happen to you one day. There's going to be an altercation over there one day, and somebody's going to get hurt, and we all going to sue.
Is this because people outside Gateway Community using that park?
Tons, yeah. See, I see it all the time, because I live there.
We have a little.
And I've been over and talked with those kids, and I thought, say, look, don't leave your stuff on the ground. You're going to get run out of here and pick up your, your gay array files, your water piles, keep your play playing.
We have some problems relative to that because of agreements we have made with the county in the past. I don't know that the fun park specifically is in that mix, but others, we cannot discriminate other people outside Gateway. So, our deal is.
I'm just afraid we're going to have a problem one day.
And I totally agree with you.
Well, Barney, let me, let me say just a couple of things. One, the idea and the intent is for that to be an administrative building. So, we have.
That's what I was saying. And then down, down below there, you guys always come up with these, you tell me what you're going to do, and then all of a sudden you come in with a second so-and-so and a state that, I don't know anything about that.
Well, I'll tell you exactly what we've approved and what our intention is. It's an administrative building. Part of that purchase plan is some improvements to the building itself, landscaping. So, what you'll get as a result is, one, it's, it's a footprint enhancement for the district, because it gives us additional space that we're in desperate need of. It gives us an opportunity to transform this location into a true utilities and public works location, so we can get better utilization of this building. But more importantly, from a community perspective, and you being adjacent to that property, what you'll see is, as an added benefit, having the district administrative offices there, you will have direct exposure and accountability and oversight for the fun park. You'll have a presence in that location. So, it, just by default, will be able to hopefully deter some existing activity that's happening today. So, I think it would be in the benefit, and I have a house in Vista, in Pinecrest myself. So, for one, I think having the district come in, you know where, where we are and what our commitment is to the community. So, we're going to do the best possible thing we can for that location. If I was in your position, I would be very pleased that the district was going to come in and take over that property, because it solves two problems for you.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's playing. I don't want to see that, though.
We will.
No, no. We didn't have intention to do that over there.
And Barney, is it your, is it your intention? I just wanted to make sure I'm clear here. Ed was speaking to us, approval of the district to move forward. We have to do that with the HOA, and we have to do it with the individual residents.
Yeah, I got to go to a meeting on that.
Well, you don't have to wait for that. Is there anything that is prohibiting you from signing off on that approval today?
I ain't signing that, because I ain't telling my wife about it.
No, I'm not asking, I'm not going to force you to sit here and sign the paperwork. My question was, did you have anything else? Was there something other than?
Just a fence and basically this, and I love disappointing about the roof.
Yeah, we're going to take care of it.
I got to spend $25,000, not me, the roof. I got, you can spend more and spray on a roof off, you know?
Barney, another thing I want to make sure that clarified, I indicated that WCI owns that road. They do own the road, but we're in the process of taking it and five others over as soon as the transfer can be done. So, from the Gateway Boulevard right away, all the way back to the Black Top at Pinecrest, which lines up with your backlot line, we'll be taking that over.
What are you going to find about that fence, though?
Yeah, we'll let you know as soon as we know.
Have y'all got my phone number? You got my phone number?
No, you can, why don't, I'll get it from you.
I don't have it written down, but I can give it to you right away. I'm going to give it off to a bunch of people.
Well, you're going to be putting it on the record, so you probably want to say that now.
So, if you'll just write, if you'll write on a piece of paper and get it, we'll make sure we stay.
I want to say to you at the last meeting we had at the church, I got on you a little bit about the lakes. I want to apologize for that.
No problem. Everybody has their opinion.
But I'm, I've been in that kind of business for 30 years, digging lakes. We built all of Gateway. If there's any way I can ever help you with anything, let me know.
Thank you.
And I understand about all the slopes. Sounds like we've got too many fingers in the pie. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barney.
And last on the list, Mr. Bob Gippert.
Bob Gippert from Pelican Preserve, and as normal when I come before you, I'm looking for some money. As a result of the flooding of Irma, we had very significant flooding in Pelican Preserve. In certain, select neighborhoods, we had water in the homes that came from the ground, either the ponds or the streets. We had some automobiles that were totaled because the water came up high enough that the insurance adjusters scrapped the cars. And we had some conservation areas that weren't burned properly, suspected not burned properly, and contributed to floodings for some of our neighbors also. So, on a short-term basis, and why I'm here today is we want to do some emergency cleanup. Now, we are not going to do all catch basins within Pelican Preserve, but we're going to do all catch basins within, I think it's eight or nine neighborhoods that were subject to the most severe flooding. We had a plan that was going to come forward in 2018 to put the cleaning of catch basins and mited end sections into a regular program. We've got bids, we've got a package, we know what we want to do, and every four or five years, everything will be done, and you go back and do it again, doing sections by sections. But the, what I'm here for today is to get an emergency funding of $69,000 to immediately go in and clean these specific neighborhoods that we have outlined in the package to Mr. Schumacher. And we will not be doing mited end sections there, we're just going to do all the catch basins. Before we do this, we want also to put a contract out to Sweeperman, who typically cleans the, the streets within Pelican Preserve that are under the district's control, and we want to have every street in our community cleaned, so that all the debris, the leaves, the dead fish, the sand, and everything else that's currently in the gutters and in the catch basins is swept up before we spend the 69,000 to actually go in and pump out these catch basins. We have the funds, they were budgeted, and it's just a question of getting the approval for this. And we have also contacted Lennar this past week and Tetra Tech and advised them that we consider the catch basin cleaning for all of the communities in Cypress Grove to be a new checklist requirement before they turn them over, because everything flooded. I mean, there's got crap in all of them. So, we're going to pay to clean ours right now, we want them to pay to clean the ones they're trying to give us. So, that's it.
And what's the amount for the, I see the 69, but what, is there a?
The budgeted amount is $100,000 per year.
No, no, just for the, you said that you needed street cleaning as well?
The street cleaning is kind of negligible, it's not a lot of money there. I'd be surprised if it's $2,000 or $3,000.
We just did 11 miles for $8,250, same company.
Yeah, it's, you know, this one-man operation comes through.
Yeah, okay.
Does the board, any of the board members have any objection to voting on this?
No.
It's not the agenda.
And I recognize that, if it wasn't for the emergency, but if we have another rainstorm and we haven't cleaned these, I'll, let somebody else have a call.
What I would suggest is that before the, we have a motion in a second, I would suggest that before the board votes on it, that asks if any members of the public want to address this topic, because it was just added to the agenda. Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments on that? Okay.
Thank you.
And we are sensitive to the agenda and the performer for doing it properly.
That's why I asked.
Thank you.
What their feeling was on there. So, we.
You have a motion in a second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve.
Discussion. Bob, is this 114 structures? Is that what, is this what you're talking about, 114 structures?
We're not, I, I don't, I looked at my notes and I didn't bring that sheet. That sounds about right. We have a total of 214 in the community, and again, we're not doing all of them.
This is limited, limited to the structure itself, not going into the pipe.
Correct, yes, this is right, 114.
But with the water levels up right now, it's, it's a more complicated task.
Yes, it is. But if we don't get them now, we can't wait for another storm. So, wait.
Same problem.
It could be this weekend.
We actually have dead fish in.
Nate.
Okay, I will call the votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who seconded, though? I didn't hear who seconded.
Uh, who's, who's seconded?
I didn't hear a second. He made the motion.
I'll second it if nobody made it.
I thought you seconded.
Yeah, I thought I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Banks seconded.
I didn't hear who seconded.
Yep.
One more question.
You going to come back later or are you just...
No.
Okay, just one question. You got a letter and you were kind enough to copy me on this of a resident and their frustration, for lack of a better term, of this whole issue of stormwater, not only NPP, but we got the same thing in Hampton Park, Stony Brook, Cypress Cay, Gateway Greens, everywhere. One of the problems we're into, and everything that you said in your letter to him was point on. One thing that you left out and I think is confusing one heck of a lot of people, is the systems that we're designing here in Gateway and have been designing for 25 years are on the premise that our streets flood. They're designed to flood on a five-year rain event. And a five-year rain event is 5.5 inches of rain in 24 hours, and Gateway PP included. That happens a lot. So plan on having water on the streets. Our problem was, we had all of our wiers being topped. Come the second week of August, if everybody remembers, they were all topped. We got hit with a 25-year storm, and three weeks later, we got hit with a hurricane, a 100-year storm. You're going to just have to be living with that. And a lot of the people don't understand that it's the way it was designed.
We have a white page for our residents that outlines exactly what you just said. We recap what happened through our lives. We talk about all those legislative hurdles that things have to go through and the plans and the ad fills, and then we tell them what we're going to do going forward, make no promises. But we're looking at everything, the jungle of mirrors, whatever can be done.
What you're, I just wanted to indicate for the record that your, your letter to that particular resident or to whatever group that sent out to, it was dead-on point, and I understand the guy's frustration, but maybe he needs to come to some of these meetings and learn. This isn't Arizona. We get a lot of water here, a lot of water, and it's designed to flood. It's not like it's an accident and it was a mistake. It was designed to flood.
Okay, Mr. Tinkell, Mrs. Flaherty.
I just wanted to make sure you heard my eye before when I...
Yes, I understood. All were in favor on that last motion, just for clarification for Mrs. Flaherty. Okay, I'm going to move on the agenda long, District Engineer.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
My name's Tyler Wainwright. For the record, I work for Tetra Tech. I am your District Engineer for tonight.
Only tonight.
You drew the short straw, didn't you?
One meeting at a time. So I would like to give you an update on where we're at with lakes, whatever. So just kind of walk you through the timeline of where we're at right now. This is looking forward into the next year's set of repairs. So last year we did five. The goal for next year is to do eight, pending a lot of items, budget being the biggest one. So the next kind of hurdle, I guess we'll call it, that we have is to get approval from our funding agency, which is the state. That is going to happen at the November hearing, hopefully. I don't know the exact date of that November hearing, I think it's the 18th, if I want to say. It's around the middle of the month. So our plan is to get documents to the state so they can be reviewing and approving and put onto that public hearing. So at the public hearing, they can give us approval to go build. One item that is kind of lingering on our end is, a couple of meetings ago, I think Danny actually gave a presentation on some alternatives of what we could do to save some money in the next round.
Stephen and Danny.
So I don't know if there was really a decision after that about...
We were told to look at it, and it's time to make a motion on that.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at as far as, I need to get some documents to the state to be reviewed so we can get funding. So we've been trying to work with staff, and staff suggested we come here and ask the board, is there, I don't know if there was a final decision on that or if you were looking for more information out of us, or just kind of closing that loop there.
Barney, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the final design of the eight final Phase 1 ponds based on the recommendations made at that meeting of a combination of using the Armamax and the non-Armamax products as tentatively laid out by Stephen on that spreadsheet that we had. And it generated the need for us to get approximately 2.6, I believe, million more to the 1.4 we have left to come up with enough money to finish those Phase 1 eight ponds.
No, it's not on the agenda. Yeah, I think that this is something we should, do we have enough time that we can bring this back at the next meeting so we can review?
Well, we might miss out on the money.
Here's the problem that, that I have timeframe-wise. The state prefers to have their documents to them 45 days in advance of that public hearing.
Okay, so we're pushing up against that.
So we're getting very close if we're not there already. So not to say that you can't, I don't know what to say, it's not to say you can't change what you give them and they approve, you change them by addendum and they subsequently approve, there's possibilities to do things like that, but it's not really the best way to go about it. So I don't want to make you guys do something that's not on the agenda tonight, I recognize it's not on the agenda, but if, I guess the point of me bringing it up tonight is, I guess, I don't know if there's anything else you want from us? I mean, is there, is there more information or...
I don't think so.
Madam Chairman, whatever, if I can, at the risk of getting scared out with eagle eyes, what I would suggest is that when the board takes a brief recess, that the board be handed, or copies be made of that recommendation from the one meeting where these various alternatives were discussed, and we add it to the agenda, provide opportunity for the public to comment on it. So if the board then feels comfortable making a decision based upon material in front of it, as opposed to trying to rely upon its recollection of the meeting from, what, back in August, I think?
Yes, sir, it was August 16th.
So if we can retrieve those minutes and maybe even that recommendation.
I do remember the presentation and...
So the board could take action tonight and have that material in front of it.
And I think, you know, I don't even, I don't know, maybe Tony can correct me, I don't know if we really even need a...
I'm sorry?
Motion, I don't know if we need a motion, I mean, just get some concurrence from the board and say, yes, that's kind of the way we want to...
I think it's important to have a motion if anybody ever asks, why did you apply for this funding in this particular way?
Okay.
I think it's important for the community and for the board.
Well, keep in mind, we already have a contract for this work.
Right.
We already have that contract. The only thing we're doing now is trying to tie down what is the product that we want to end up with.
The actual method and technique.
The methodology. The issue was, we came up with is that we're costing ourselves into oblivion of continuing to use Armamax, and Armamax is not necessary in every application. So Tetra Tech came back to us with a proposal based upon going around the field, Chris went, Mike and I went, and we looked at these things and pretty well on a judgment call came up with, wherever we have an escarpment of less than so many inches, then we go with the fabric, and wherever we have an escarpment greater than so many inches, then we go with the Armamax product. And so I think we're where we're at. I don't see that we're going to get anything different. The issue is, is to keep our place in line so as to not to lose access, because we don't get that 2.4 million dollars, we just lost one whole construction season.
We lost what?
One whole construction season.
And we did ask for cost savings measures, and they brought back the best they could, they really could do for cost savings. I do remember that. And I remember the lakes, I remember the color-coded photo.
We needed about 2.4, 2.6 million.
So...
But the dollar value, the dollar value dropped to 110, 120 foot, something like that.
I don't remember the exact estimate, I thought it was like a million dollars overall savings I thought of. So...
I'm fine with Tony doing that and getting this, we just can't afford to take a chance to lose that money.
And Tyler, what I would say, just moving forward, anytime I think there's a presentation, whether it's for awareness or something that you need action on, if you don't get it during that board meeting, I would have you or Danny follow it with Chris to make sure that it's a follow-up item for future boards, especially if there's timing considerations. Because it's really important for this board to make sure that we're voting on things that are in the agenda. And I know that things are time-sensitive, so I would just say, put it in your plan. That way you don't have any problem with going through and getting approvals.
And having something in writing instead of all this first verbal stuff.
Yes, sir, I agree completely, and, you know, when Chris put that on the agenda the first time, he specifically listed no action needed. I don't necessarily agree with the way he did that, I think there was action needed. And we've been trying to follow up with Chris since then, and he's basically been ignoring us, so that's why we're here tonight.
Mrs. Flaherty.
If you had given us a written report, it would have been already in the agenda, but you don't give us a written report. So that's another thing, too. We only get verbal from you, so...
Can, can we get a copy of what was provided at that meeting that we can at least pass around? I don't think we need five copies of it, but just to jog the board's memory as to what they had provided at that meeting?
Was it emailed out or was it part of the meeting packet?
I thought we had a handout at that meeting.
It was in the agenda, it was on the meeting packet. It was placed on the agenda and it was reviewed. So personally, I thought this kind of could have been worked out in the staff-level follow-up on this. Chris disagreed with that and recommended that I come here and bring it up with everyone tonight.
All right, well, that's all we'll do. Do you want to see if we can get copies after a recess and then bring it back?
Yeah.
And then again, and then provide an opportunity for the public to comment on it as an action item.
So if you'll hold your motion, Mr. Tinkell, okay. Anything else from District Engineer?
No, I think it's one item that sort of involves us for matter of read later on, so we'll hold off until then for that one, but nothing else from me.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Tyler, real quick, when did you, what do you think that was first drawn? August?
I thought it was August 16th.
17th, maybe?
Whatever that meeting date was.
All right, thank you.
You send the minutes up.
I couldn't find the board.
Oh, okay.
Barney, a couple of things for Tyler.
Yeah, go ahead.
Tyler, have you received anything, I said a while ago, I hadn't, I don't know if anybody else, because nobody's spoken up, but since our meeting with Russ Smith from Lennar and Baraco, have any submissions come into you as to what we asked for?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so there's not been anything. The other one is that are we now to the point where the ball relative to Ford Line is out of our court and in their court in the way of a check to accept or not accept?
It was my understanding that a check was mailed to Ford Line.
Check was sent, great.
That was my understanding.
Did they by chance sign the change orders and return the change orders?
I have not seen any documents executed by them, no.
Okay, let's do this, let's put on the agenda for the next meeting that if we do not have a signed change order, we reissue the change orders as unilateral change order and tell them that's the way it is.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
District Council.
Yes, just briefly, the memo in the agenda book as to liability for fallen trees was just sort of a general sort of reminder of the state of law in the state of Florida in which anybody makes any claims against the district, that's what that's to address, unless there are any questions.
No, it was clear as mud.
Yeah, as long as it...
Clear as a tree limb.
Disease, make sure it's not disease-defective or unsafe condition. On the Girl Scout Building, the County Commission on its Consent Agenda this past Tuesday approved the disclaimer and release, so that part is done, and maybe Michael can address the put amendment when he gets to his report. But we're moving along on that. With regards to the Linear Park, I found some additional information, so I probably am in a better position next board meeting to provide some information. David Caldwell sent something to Mr. Tinkell, I found an additional document so that I can have a better handle on the Linear Park FPL easement and existing use agreements that may be applicable to what can be done, what FPL and WCI have agreed in the past. I've asked David for a copy that won agreement, he probably didn't see the email yet, I sent you today.
You sent it today?
Yes.
I haven't seen it.
That's what I mean, yeah. So, and we're getting closer on finding that. One item that fortunately, South Florida still notifies me when there are permit modifications or changes to any permits in Gateway. And I think the district has been trying to get on that list forever, and don't tell South Florida I'm on it because I keep getting the notifications.
I think you just did.
Yeah, there's a permit modification involving Pelican Preserve that they modified a permit in Sun City Center to remove two control structures from a planned set. And it indicated that the control structures were never constructed in South Florida, says it was determined they did not provide any water quality treatment volume, and both were set at the control elevation for both upstream and downstream sub-basins, and no other modification was required. I've not heard any feedback from anybody saying that that permit modification is a problem. If the district was to challenge that permit modification, this district, we'd have until October 11th to file for administrative hearing.
Nobody knew anything about it until now.
Well, the engineers and staff, I've sent it out to them to see if anybody had any heartache, heartburn, because I'm not an engineer, I don't understand.
We can't find any plans that shows what you call a control structure. I'm not aware of any control structures in Pelican Preserve, save the two wiers on the flowway and the one up at the north end. Everything else is pond-to-pond structures.
Perhaps Mr. Caldwell, we can ask him, David, you understand that modification?
If it's just a catch basin or something like that and they use the wrong terminology...
I told your consultant to talk to Mike Dellis.
That's what we've tried. I don't have a problem with it if it's not a control structure.
Get the answer and come back.
It does not seem to be a problem, Mr. Gippert has a question.
I looked at the request, and where it's located is not an area we've had any problems. I can't imagine why you want to spend money doing something.
Okay, thank you. And again, it's part of the frustration we exhibit with South Florida, that the district generally does not receive notification. And nothing further at this time, unless there are any questions.
Okay.
I'll get several for Tony. Earlier this week on the Hampton Park discussion, Melissa Roberts and Jennifer Krumloff turned their attention to Pelican Preserve.
Oh, we did.
And we had a meeting, Chris, maybe you or Mike or...
Tyler, I don't think you.
Or it was Danny. They hit me with, what are you guys doing in the way and why are you setting on the request for transfer of environmental resource permit to the perpetual operation entity? Long story short, why aren't we transferring over to the CDD and accepting project name, Pelican Preserve, nine-hole basin 15, and Pelican Preserve-Carina Phase 2? And they sent the transfer papers and the letter and saying, what are you guys doing? We thought you were going to approve this and it was done. As I recall, this had to do with that issue that they told us in the meeting that the aesthetic mound in the waterway was not an issue as far as a hydraulic, so get over it and accept it. And I, is that what they're saying here? Because they aren't very happy with us. We need to get these things approved if that is indeed the next step.
Is this something that you can give to Tyler and Danny to take a look at? Because if it's something that needs to come before the board, it needs to be provided, that information needs to be provided to the whole board.
I don't know where or when, alls I know is, remember, Chris, we were in that meeting and we asked them that question, and they indicated, if you've got an aesthetics problem, that's your problem, but from an hydraulic problem, they're in one, and so consequently, they asked us to approve this, so it was some time ago, we just haven't done anything with it.
And how did you come about getting those documents?
They sent it to me to bring to you.
To who sent it to you?
South Florida Water Management.
What I would suggest...
And I believe they copied, and I copied Tony and I copied Danny.
I did get a copy after we went in.
Sorry about that.
What I would suggest is, is that, Mr. Tinkell may want to elbow me, is that this item be set on the next board meeting with recommendation from the engineers and staff as to whether to proceed or not, and then Mr. Gippert and/or the advisory committee could also weigh in. And again, I think we've had a significant discussion at prior board meetings that there are two different permits, and this one area where, I'll call it the sandbar, is the area we're talking about, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Tinkell?
I believe it is.
And it's, and South Florida does not see that as being an issue with functionality, water quality, water quantity, or permit issues. And so I think that's what he is, Mr. Tinkell is reinforcing his South Florida staff position today. But I think we should have on the agenda with recommendations, full discussion, and if it is purely, I'll call it aesthetic, it becomes an expense item, and it's not a permit issue, then we have to wrestle with that.
And did, did you get copy on any of this?
Yeah, I sent you a copy of it.
Ed did. Same thing, it's too late on the agenda, so...
Yeah, when South, when South Florida tells you to do something, and it's one of the things that we basically didn't follow up on, it's not something I want to kick down the road.
No, I think it's important to put on the agenda, yeah, I agree, I think it's a good point to put on the agenda so that if Melissa asks and says, listen, it's scheduled for our October 19th meeting.
And is there, is there some way we can update that point of contact so it goes to Chris? I mean, I'm sure you've got engagement and relationships with South Florida management.
Well, they just passed it on to me in a discussion on Hampton Park and said, well, we're trying, you're asking us to do something, why don't you do something for us? Where do we stand on it?
Okay, yeah.
So that's how it came about. I wouldn't go sit there, none of my business.
No, I was just, my point was, I just want to make sure that Chris is getting the information information when things are engaged.
Yeah, I don't know why. This is the first time I've seen the paperwork, so I don't remember calling, giving us anything in that meeting. So there must have been something sent to us earlier that we ignored.
It's for nine holes, right?
Yes, sir. Nine holes, Nine Holes Basin and Karina Phase 2. I'm sure it's that where we're talking.
So just so the board's aware of what they're talking about, that's more or less tract L that we discussed previously before. So just so you know where it is they're talking about. That's tract L.
Thank you.
The DOR is tract L.
I can call and just tell them that we could not take it before this meeting. It didn't get in on time, and we'll have it on the next meeting.
Does she have some more for me, or? Did she have some more for me, or not?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Not that I want to get work.
Are you going to talk about Timber Creek and the modification?
No, I just received that notification.
Okay, I didn't know. Chris, do you know? Did you have a chance, or Mike? Did that thing have any ramifications for us, the Timber Creek mod?
Again, what Mr. Tinkell's talking about, again, I get the notifications weekly from South Florida. I'm on their mailing list. Shh, don't tell them. And listed in there was a mass grading permit modification for Timber Creek. And so I passed that along so that others could check on to see if it had any impact. And I don't know if that, I think that's what Mr. Tinkell is asking about.
Yes.
So...
I was calling to give you a speech here.
Correct. Because I think I got it Monday and...
It wasn't on my radar for this.
Yeah, I just don't know if it has a timeline of where we have to make a response. The other one with Tony is FPL easement and the Linear Park. You sent a bunch of documents that choke a horse on that.
I'm getting closer.
I looked at the picture on here, and it mentions 85 acres, but that park is 135. Is this just for a component of it?
Once again, I'm not finished with the, yes, so this is, I think it's just a part.
Bring that in.
The next one, Flowway Number 4. Where do we stand? Have we got a, anybody been able to find anything on what our ownership is on Flowway Number 4, that we'll try to clean that thing before the next hurricane hits?
I found some additional documents from, which I'll be following up on, when I was looking at the Hampton Park-Pelican Preserve interconnect, because that shows up on the plans that were submitted to South Florida.
It's on the Stony Brook plans.
But it's also on that. So that also gives me additional leads. So I'll report on that the next board meeting.
Okay. Area 9, have we had any success on Area 9 getting the easement from that guy that owns that 50-foot square that's botching this whole thing up?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nothing?
Area 51.
That is Area 51. That's all for Tony.
Yeah, I found some more stuff on the Flowway thing.
So can we step back, one, to the District Engineers, since we all have these documents back in front of us?
Don't you want somebody...
Here's your friend.
...to write up the resolution for us?
I don't think we really need that. I don't. I think that all the Tetra Tech is asking for is guidance. Do we agree, and this is what we want to go forward with? Since they tried to reduce, they asked them to reduce the amount that it was going to cost to do the next section of lakes. And I think they did a really good job.
When you're involved in trying to get money from the state, and they sooner or later are going to want to see a trail of all the documents that lead up to your request for your funds, I think you're making a big mistake not to have a written resolution for us to consider and approve.
I don't think we did a resolution for the previous lakes in the request for the funding.
We already have an approved facilities plan that we have to stick with, so it doesn't make any difference. Doesn't make any difference. The only thing that we're doing is trying to correct them and get them guidance on what is the document that we want to transmit to the state that we're going to do for the rehabilitation. In the past, the idea of the fabric is where we're going, so it's not a change. The changes we're doing is we're cutting back on the extent to which we're using the Armamax product.
Sure. I guess the question for Tyler, Madam Chair, might be, so the board can frame, or a board member may want to frame a motion, is that based upon this report, Tyler, have you seen that handout?
Yeah, it's the presentation.
The presentation?
It's the presentation.
Yeah.
So I guess if you can detail what you were planning on submitting as part of the techniques and processes and construction techniques to be utilized in the submittal that you're planning on making or preparing to the DEP.
Say that again.
No, but you're planning on making a submittal saying, here's the techniques we're planning on using, here's the cost we estimate.
No, sir. We're going to submit plans and specifications to them. So not necessarily a narrative. It'll be plans and specifications.
And the plans and specifications that you intend on submitting are?
The areas that we identified in that report, I understand your question. Let me explain. The areas identified in that report are going to receive something other than what we did last time, which is its full TRM approach. There was a separate alternative cross-section that we presented, and I think it actually was handed out at that meeting. I don't think it was in that agenda. That's essentially what we plan on doing. Now, we might make some modifications to that and some tweaks, but essentially that's it.
So the recommendation, so the application would be for the mixed solution approach is indicated with the technique and quantity?
Correct.
Yes.
It was listed on the last page.
It's about 50/50 of Armamax and the other product.
Correct.
And saves a little over a million bucks.
The part in blue.
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah, couldn't he write something up on a piece of paper right now to hand to us so that we can look at, so it would be in a written form?
This is it. I don't know what else you want.
No, but it's not a motion. I mean, really write up the motion.
I think you motions, not the engineer.
Yeah, but write up what he wants. I mean, he wants us to approve the mixed solution approach.
I think he did, yeah.
But that's just on the last page.
I think Mr. Tinkell may be able to frame a motion.
Yeah. The motion I made earlier is to authorize them to proceed with what is identified as the mixed solution approach with a total estimated cost of about $2.4 million and about a 50/50 split between the Armamax and other products for the bank stabilization.
Is that the trick, Tom?
That does the trick. I'd be happy to write that, if you want me to write that.
Okay.
I mean, whatever you want me to do.
That's a necessary presentation, motions.
Well, we can't go in and...
So that's the motion?
Yeah, why don't you go, why don't you go write it and make everybody happy?
I will type something up right now.
Before you, before you do that, Mr. Flaherty...
Tyler, I have a couple of questions. So when you submit this for the hearing in November, you had mentioned something previously. If, between the approval and when the contractor starts the work, if there are modifications, if, you know, if we do tweak this design, what's the, for one, how do we go about doing that?
Change order.
Just, I want to know how complicated it is.
It's not super complicated. Basically, all we would need to do is, this is the approval for the plans and specs to get the project out to bid to the general public. You can change things via addendum. And you just could subsequently, after that public hearing, you send that to the DEP for concurrence. So, yeah, you can change that.
Okay. And Tyler, Ed, whoever can answer this, when are we, when is our plan for the work, when are we targeting work to begin?
We'd like to start the minute the water levels drop in January, instead of losing 90 days like we did last year.
And we've got, we've got the contractors?
We've got a bid.
We've got, or we got a bid?
We still got a bid.
Okay. So we're just waiting for our approval on this, and the water levels drop, right? So we have between now and January for, okay. And one more question. Tyler, you had said that, it sounds like you're getting a little bit of pushback from Chris on this item. Chris, is there anything specific that you want to talk about on, you know, on your behalf as far as, is there anything that we should be, you know, looking at, or any items that we need to know before we put this to a vote?
Well, we took the number of afterwards, sat down, had a number of recommendations that are still up on that whiteboard. And my only pushback was from the staff level. I wasn't going to approve this. I mean, last time it was presented as an informational item, not for the board to take action. And Danny made that presentation, and that wasn't part of it. So I was not going to approve on the staff level to move forward with this concept. And I said, bring it to the board, do an agenda, and you could bring it up today during engineer's time.
What would you, did you recommend something different for Tetra Tech to bring back for approval?
Permitting, and the only thing that stands out, too, is, you know, are we going to get permits from the county for the total aspects that are required?
Yeah, we have, part of this project is litorals, because litorals are a part of the DO. The ponds we did before did not have litoral requirements. These do. Well, take it back. Two of them did, and we didn't accomplish that. But these do have litoral requirements, especially Stony Brook.
And they're on here. They're on these manuals.
They're on there, yeah.
So I guess I want to clear, make clear that the SRF money is not covering litoral and litoral work, because that was not included in the facilities plan. And that's the direction that the board provided at that time.
That's correct.
So while, while we did this, and we said, listen, these are good spots to go put litoral and all that, I just want to be clear that the SRF money will not cover litoral construction, replacement, whatever it is.
Which is about 7, 7K, is that?
Yeah.
That's the guess.
Okay. So that comes out of additional funding?
Right.
Okay. And last thing, Tyler, I know we, I mean, residents, the board, we've looked at these lakes, and we've tried different things in the past, and we've tried the Armamax, and now we're coming back, you know, with a modified plan and design to reduce costs in areas that aren't highly, aren't critical, however you engineers specify it. Would, is this an area, I mean, this, the lakes and the redesign, is this an area within Tetra Tech that, you know, you feel that you've got submeter experts, and you have all the knowledge available in order to value, drive value engineering, using the, you know, right material mix? And my point is, the reason why I'm asking that is, we've got plenty of lakes left to go, and this is getting expensive. So we, as a board, need to make sure we're doing our due diligence in the design, the contracting, and the execution and oversight. And I just want to make sure that Tetra Tech is confident in this approach, that it's been fully vetted, and this is from a value engineering perspective and cost saves. This is the best that we can do right now, based on what we know.
So the very short version of the answer is yes. So we have done probably over 20 miles of shoreline design in southwest Florida alone. We've done a ton of it. There's a lot, a lot of different ways that you can repair shorelines. I will be the very first person to tell you that this is not the cheapest way. Cheapest way to go repair shorelines is go throw dirt down. Second cheapest way to go repair shorelines is go do tubes. This board specifically told us, we don't want to just do dirt, and we don't want to do tubes. So the two cheapest ways are out.
Okay.
They're short-term solutions, and I think if you go to a lot of communities around here that have done those, I think you're going to find that they're just redoing them. So this is not the cheapest way to go. I don't want to tell anyone that it is. And a lot of people don't like it. I don't think Chris likes it, to be honest with you. But it's what we think works very well. I think if you go to, look at the lakes out there that just went through, you know, category two or three hurricane, they look pretty darn good. And I think they're going to hold up very well for the community. So, no, it's not cheap. But it's something that every single community in southwest Florida and pretty much everywhere in Florida is going to deal with if they haven't already dealt with it. So there's costs associated. We, I will tell you that we really are looking at a lot of different options that we can take to lower costs. But yes, we are...
And I don't think we want to sacrifice quality.
Yeah, we've gone to other communities, Mike and I and Chris, we've gone to other communities, other engineers doing work. And when it comes down to the technique, there are different techniques. But the pricing is all falling into that range of this lower non-Armamax deal.
Yep. That's all I...
But they don't have escarpment like we have either. So that's the difference.
That's all that I have.
And I have one question, and that is, the all Armamax is 18,000, well, I'll say 19,000 linear feet. The mixed solution approach comes to 15,347. So what happens to the other 3,600 linear feet?
My guess is litorals.
I think...
My guess is litorals.
Well, the litorals are in both places on here, and there's no difference in the litoral.
There were some spots, if I recall correctly, that...
You took out?
They were fine.
You just felt like they didn't need anything at all.
Yeah, I think there was, there was a couple areas, Mark, where they, actually, I think they...
Well, good, good examples, Pinewood Lakes, it had that one section that had already been done, and we were just modifying it.
Yeah, there's one section in Pinewood that it's got about, I don't know how long, but it's like 1,000 feet roughly, because it's a rip route. And we just said, hey, it's not that bad, leave it.
The 18,000 is very close to the total. I remember that. But I think that's the answer.
They said do nothing, because it's in, it's fine.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure.
So Tyler, I was just showing, Mark, there's some areas that are indicated as kind of blank, which is a do-nothing path. So I think some of the, some of the areas were called out. They were, they were fine. There's no need to do anything.
I just, just wanted to make sure that I understood that clearly.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have one more question.
From the engineer, if I may.
Tyler, I'm looking at page 83 of our agenda.
Of tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it has to do with the lake bank, the financing on the lake bank repairs. And the way I'm reading this thing, all the, all the money that we have used to pay for the contractors have come from the short-term loan. What I want to know is when and if and who is responsible for getting the money from the state.
So Gateway staff and their attorney have been working to execute the loan agreements with the state to get reimbursed.
Loan application, I think, right?
But, yeah. The design loan has an application in place. It needs to be executed, I think that's right. And then the construction loan, the application still needs to be made.
Say again, the construction loan, what?
The application to the state still needs to be made. So they went through the hearing to do the bond validation, which was step one, I guess. Step two is make the application now.
Okay, well, we're paying interest to the, to the center state for this loan.
Did we have an appeal deal that's what held it up?
Say again.
Did we have a 30-day appeal?
Yeah, that ended a couple weeks ago, though.
It's over.
Oh, I had the certificate of no appeal. That ended September 9th.
So then, so we should be able to file an application then.
Yeah, I mean, so...
Who's going to do it? Who's responsible?
It's not us. And so we gave a proposal...
Somebody hold up your hand. Okay, thank you.
Actually, the application here for the chair's signature one was never filed. And we'll be filing tomorrow for the reimbursement of approximately $100,000 in engineering fees. And then the next two to three weeks, we'll pull all that information together, cancel checks, and there'll be one large reimbursement.
Two to three weeks to, for, for payments to four companies?
No, they've, they've all been paid.
I know they've been paid, but I'm talking about sending it up to the state so we get the reimbursement. Two or three weeks?
Yes, sir.
I used to do that stuff in a day and a half.
Are you volunteering?
I will.
But the state, is the state that takes that time, not staff?
All right. Thanks for making that.
And one other, one other part, too, is that once the application goes up, we get the loan agreement back. Then we need to work through that process, because if it's a 20-year amortization, we need that whole idea about the trustee. So we, the sooner we get the loan agreement back from the state, we can wrap that part up.
Thank you.
The problem, sir. So, sorry, just, am I still typing up a...
Yes.
Resolution?
Apparently, we need it.
We take a break.
Let's take a, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Flaherty, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had Chris put some of these extras on the table if anybody wanted to look at them.
Okay. Five-minute break. Actually, let's make it 10.
10, thank you very much.
There's only two holes.